Number 10, most recently, you'll be pleased to know I'm finishing number 10, the use of U Lodge as asylum seeker hotel. So that's my report to you, and you can raise things afterwards, but I don't think we do questions on that now, do we? We do now?
No.
No, later, later, that's right, yeah. So we now turn to reports from our councillors, I think our county councillor is not here, and has not sent us anything or sent any apologies. So we turn to our district councillors, and I think they've tossed a coin to see who goes first, so councillor Carol Saw.
Hi, everyone, I must apologise more because I've got a dreadful cold and I can't speak very loud, sorry. I'm your district councillor for Daleacre Hill, and I have to mention this emotive subject. At full council, on the 23rd of February, I responded to the council leader's statement referring to housing of the asylum seekers in Kegworth. I pointed out that village residents were justifiably concerned about this matter, and there had been no prior consultation to prepare villagers or the parish council. I asked that as the council leaders have the ear of the Home Office, would they put forward the concerns that we have in the village regarding the numbers, the lack of amenities, and pressure on the already struggling doctors' surgery. I've since heard that local matters will be dealt with away from Kegworth, so that's a start and it should help. And I also mentioned that a lot of local residents have lost their gym, because there is one at U Lodge, and there's very little leisure provision provided in the village of this type. There's always also the concerns over the job losses. And I asked for clarity surrounding the planning change of use question, but I'm yet to have a response to this. I also wrote to our independent MP, Andrew Bridgen. I received a reply, but I've seen from Facebook and other things that my reply wasn't as detailed as other people's. I don't know, by the way.
In terms of overall, the policing style, the team are here to reassure you. We're here to bring people to justice, and basically, anything that you report to us will be robustly investigated. Obviously, I know what's been happening over the last few weeks in relation to U Lodge Hotel, and I welcome anybody that is subject to any intimidation, any crimes, to report that. I cannot investigate things if people don't tell us, and that's really important to note. The other thing that I really need to impress on people is social media. It's really, really important that we take a sensible approach to social media, and not to share things that we don't know is true. There's been a number of posts that have been made aware of, and some of them where we tried to fact check. Unfortunately, I've had no agreed to come forward, and nobody actually confirmed things that have been said on social media as being true. So as adults, and I've got three children, and I tell them, don't believe everything you see on social media, fact check it, and make sure that you don't repost anything that you don't know is true. Okay?
Thank you, thank you very much. I think I'm going to add to that, actually, at the end, on your researching and fact checking and back it up, because I feel I've spent a lot of my life in the last four weeks doing the same, and if you just take one example, where there was an incident reported, it might have been ages ago now, about the library. I spent ages then and since talking to individual people, including in the end a volunteer who has been very quick off the mark because of his connections, actually getting to know some of the asylum seekers, and did have a group of four asylum seekers at the library. And I've spoken to the library staff, I've spoken to the person who was with this group, and that's what fact checking is about, that sort of thing. So I want to back up what Wayne has said on that without going into any more detail than that. Sorry to comment on what you've said, but I think it's just appropriate leading, because I'm sure people will have some questions. So when we go to the questions which we asked to be submitted in advance, didn't we? There's somebody who has to go soon, and don't worry, I will raise your question if we have time. So I'm going to go through the questions as we've got them written down, and if there is time, we might add on a few. And I think that's my discretion, really, so it's been a good meeting so far, so you listened a lot, you deserve to say. And how do we go about answering these? It's not the parish councils due to reply them all, is it, Donna? What's the protocol?
It might be that if there's something that we can't answer ourselves, that we tell everybody where we're going to go for the answer and come back to them via emails. I've got people's email addresses, so some of the questions.
Right, okay. Nathan Grange, are you here?
I'm in here.
Right, Nathan, your question, you want to ask it, or shall I read it?
You have to retag on that.
Okay, all right. I don't know whether to stand or sit, by the way, you'll see him jumping. Does the council consider the reaction from a considerable number of people in the village to the perceived change in role of the U Lodge to be proportionate? That's the reaction of people. Is the reaction proportionate? In other words, does the council, and this is addressed to the parish council, I'm not sure Donna will tell me whether this is that we have to reply. In other words, does the council think citizen-led protests in the village are actually helpful in achieving the goal of returning the hotel to a transit hub, which has been its typical usage for a considerable amount of time? I think that means just normal residential uses of transit hubs, I'm not too long familiar with transit hubs. If they don't agree, and I suppose that means the parish council, what actions, if any, would they suggest? So should the parish council, in other words, me as chair of this meeting here, take this as a personal question to the parish council?
It can't be a formal response from the parish council, because they haven't addressed it at the meeting and made a resolution. However, you could respond yourself.
As a personal view?
Yeah, but it would be your personal view.
All right. Well, I'll give other councillors a chance first, who are present, I think we've got seven out of eight councillors here in the room. You don't have to, but I'll give other councillors the chance to say something first. Do you want me to read it again? It's the proportionality of the response of people in the village to the changed role. It's the value of citizen-led, what we think about citizen-led protests, whether they're helpful in returning it to its former use, and if you don't agree, what actions would you suggest? Many councillors want to have a go. It'd be your personal view.
I'll say something then. I'm Hilary Williams, I'm on the council, and I think you're asking a million dollar question, really, as to what is the right response to the current situation. I don't think the council has much power to change how things are done.
I understand that bit, but is it the councillor's opinion that actually citizen-led protest is actually going to help this cause, or not?
So again, that is something we need to all discuss then, because we've all probably got different views on that at a meeting before we can answer it. Me personally, not sure. I feel like it's a done deal, and I'm not sure protests will make a difference. I'm not saying it shouldn't happen, but I just don't know how effective they're going to be, but that's me personally.
Thank you, Hilary. Does anybody, any other councillor want to chip in?
Yeah, and I will say, you know, we've written to the MP, we've written to the Secretary of State, or the
Immigration Minister, something's bothered Robert Jenrig, yes?
Yeah. You know, we've asked council to look into it at North West and at LCC. I think we've gone down all the routes we could possibly go down to ask all the right questions. As a parish councillor, as Hilary says, we haven't got any power, we can't say to people, you can't protest, because obviously that's their point of view, and if they want to do it. As long as it is kept peaceful, and it doesn't involve outside groups, but as we were saying on Facebook, it does involve outside groups, and that's where the problem lies, I think, personally.
Any other councillor that wants to have a go? Well, my view, again personally, and picking up that point, I mean, I'm all for the right to protest, you know, and I think there's been a bill going through Parliament that erodes that, and I'm dead against it, but that's my personal view, because I think the right to protest is very valuable, whether protests are going to achieve anything. I'm going to have to keep trying to get the people, the organisers, to say what they expect the situation to be in three months' time, say, or six months' time, and it raises back to what Hillary said about done deals, because the contract has been signed, it's a year's contract, we know that. I'm not giving any secrets away. So what is the aim of Save Kegworth? What does Save Kegworth mean? There's a banner on the fence of the bypass, what does it mean?
It's quite, am I allowed to speak or not? Am I allowed to speak?
I'll take a reply on that, yeah, sorry. Can you misread your name, sorry?
I need a listen.
Right, okay, thanks.
You're a resident of the village, you're not a resident of the village.
So Donna's asking if you're a resident of the village round the corner?
I'm in Shescott, but I'm from Shescott, I mean, my son lives here.
Well, can I kindly say then that we wouldn't normally be expecting comment from anywhere with Kegworth Parish on this occasion? But we'll take your comment, because you've turned an interest.
Right, basically, Save Kegworth is allowed, yes, and answers. All we're asking for, is what simple thing we're asking for is information. Two other, there's three simple questions we want answered. How many are there? What nationality are they? Second question, what's the immigration status? Are they Santi, or are they not? We don't know. Third one, what's the long term plan? Now, far getting no answers from those three questions, which we haven't got, no one knows, it's open to social media, and they're getting completely right. They're running right on social media, they're all motherism, rape lists and all this sort of stuff. That's because there's no defence call from them either. We've got no information. Basically, not information is causing fear. They're petrified out there because of reading social media. And that's the situation right. So we only want the answers to those three questions. If you can't answer those three questions, we'll get the answers, why?
Well, thanks for that.
That's a statement of what we're after.
And Andy, I hope you realise I've been generous in
Yeah, that's fine, no, no, you have to question that.
And I'm not doing you down, because I have to agree with you about information in general, because it's the same as Wayne's been talking about, when there's a lack of information. I would disagree with some of the ways you've said something, but that when there's a lack of information, everybody starts guessing and making it up.
And social media is very right.
And that is in general an issue, but I mean, you know, it doesn't matter to me what nationality they are, because of the people, but that's just my personal comment, you know. So don't answer that, but I'm just saying, I agree with you about information, and Andrew wants to come back.
One last thing, you asked us what our goal was, and that's a goal, I've set it out, we want answers, that's it. Until we get answers, until we get answers, we're going to be petrified. No one will answer. I'll admit that.
Thanks for the wee from Save Kegworth from Shescott, okay. Andrew?
I was just saying that the answer to one of those questions is quite simple, actually, what is the immigration status? Well, they are people who are seeking asylum in the UK, whose case has not been investigated and decided by the Home Office, it's as simple as that. They're not British nationals, they're foreign nationals, who are asylum seekers and are being reviewed. It's as simple as that. I don't see what mother is to say on that.
Okay, thank you. Andrew?
Ray, as you know, I put a freedom of information request into the Home Office. They're allowed 20 days from when it goes in. We've asked, I think, about, I sent you a copy, it was about six items, those sort of things are included in it. I doubt very much that we'll get a reply in the 20 days, they'll make an excuse and all that sort of thing. I've tried it before on various things, but we have, Ray, has worked with me on this, on what we put in, so, yeah, we've got a request in. Well, when it comes back, it's now been in for about nine days. They've got 20 days to go.
Okay, I don't really want to go, this was Nathan's question, and I don't know whether you think we've answered this in that discussion or not, Nathan. Do you want to come back at us on that, or not? Are you happy with where we've got to now?
I still, I know the question was put in, and you can't answer it as the parish council, but what we need to do is try and work out whether the parish council's overall view and situation, overall view is either in favour of kind of direct action from the villagers, or basically us trying to work through a route, quite rightly, as the councillor pointed out, in terms of going through, writing letters, talking to MPs, et cetera, or whether a more positive approach by demonstrating attracts enough attention that this particular decision could be overturned, or, you know, when you said about what you expect in three months' time, in an ideal world, then would, you know, the status quo return and the village would kind of return to its usual ebb and flow of visitors? Not what's happened to the U Lodge?
As chair of the parish council, my view is that you're actually expecting the impossible in terms of what you're expecting in there still, because you're still trying. It feels like the parish council is under threat and pressure, and on the block, is what it because you know, I'll start with what I've got in my hand now from the 11th of March, which was Saturday. I put this on social media, because I knew that Donna had received it late on Thursday, and that it hadn't seen the light of day, and you'll probably remember it, and it starts with the three questions that we asked the CEO of Leicestershire County Council, why Kegworth? Why were the other recent village cases halted and not Kegworth's? A request for current and future numbers and ratios, because the ratios are important. The ratios are very important. Right from the start, on the 19th, when I wrote to Robert Jenrig on our behalf, and it was agreed, it wasn't just me, behind the scenes, we managed to get something off on the 19th, the contract was signed on the 20th, and it started with 1 to 17 in Kegworth. And so requests for current and future numbers and ratios in Leicester and Leicestershire. I wasn't entirely happy with the reply from Leicestershire County Council, that some of our questions were answered, and it was said these are beyond us, they're for the Home Office, so Andrew Bridgen passed them on to the Home Office, and the thing I've just put on Facebook this weekend is the reply from the Home Office, which includes those questions, and it raises lots of unanswered questions for me, I highlighted them on here. It talks about the asylum accommodation support contract, Schedule 2. I've not had time to look up, because I'm up to there with this issue, but what the schedule is, it talks about the responsibility of the age with communities. This will be to Serco, and I wonder whether it was met. That was another point we raised early on. There's too much to keep up, but we will, as a parish council, we will keep on putting these points. And we were right again, as a result of all the things I've highlighted, there are many more. Site is considered individually on its own unique merits. I would like to know a little bit more about what the analysis of this site and its unique merits for such a hotel was. So you get my point?
Absolutely.
We're very much on side for the village. But we're not for not welcoming people who cut her up. And I tried in my opening comments to talk about Eastwinders. This is what Kegworth has been about and will be about, and it's rooted and embedded in the community, that we don't actually fall out with somebody who moves in next door. As far as I'm concerned. Having a go and really dig, dig, and I'm a digger, I'll tell you personally, and the parish council may be sick and fed up of me, but I will dig and dig and dig, because I'm suspicious about the way this has been done, in Kegworth's case. Highly suspicious. But I would thought those things were obvious, from what I've kept trying to, what we've published, as you've read, and what I personally have done as well, I would have thought they were obvious, and therefore, I'm glad it's come out tonight, and the way it has, but I don't think we say much more to your question now, is that all right?
Yeah, but I can assure you, Ray, your parish council's not on the block, it's this question of like, you know.
I think councillors have felt that, and certainly last Monday, as a body, we felt very much, well, I won't say what we felt, but we felt.
It's an emotive issue.
Good to feel. Right, Stephen King, are you here?
Yeah.
Now then, I don't know, do you want to put yours, or shall I read them out?
Yeah, you have to read them out.
Okay, we might have answered some.
You might have answered.
I'll do them one at a time, and if you think it's okay, we'll move on, okay? Questions were, how and when did the parish council hear about the change of use of the U Lodge? Do you want us to answer that, or do you, all right?
Well, I think that's been
With Donna?
The 30th of February, we answered that at the mass meeting, didn't we?
Yeah, last week. Because life overtakes us. Is there any intention for the council to object to the influx of asylum seekers? Have we dealt with that?
I think that's been done.
I'm not trying to get it, if you don't think, please come back.
I submitted these questions about 10 days ago.
I know, I know, that's the page we've all been moving at, we've all been moving fast, yeah, yeah. Given the numbers involved, will the council receive extra funding to pay for extra services and facilities for an increased number of residents? This council, no? District council, no? County council, no? I hear a no. Okay, but, you know, that's the way it is, life.
I have been told, though, that if there is a cost to the council, that I can evidence the cost of the council, it's an additional cost, I could go to Eastwinders council and talk to them about seeking support for something. So if there is anything that we think we are spending, that we have a plan to spend on that particular issue, it's possible to go to them. I don't know whether it would be successful, but there is any funding that just automatically comes to us.
I was tempted to speculate on what sort of things they might fund, but I don't think it's worth it, we'd waste our time. Wayne?
Just on the funding then. So obviously, we've just had our new rates bill, but basically, what's happening in the village and the policing element and that, that'll be on next year's rates, any increase, yeah? So basically, if there is a cost, what will then come back to us, yeah? So obviously, that will be factored into next year, I would estimate, no?
Doesn't work like that.
It don't, much budget's on the council.
It's a bit unfair to ask away.
No, no, I'm just saying, just something, yeah, what I've mentioned, it's not my question.
Because of the positions I've been in, in terms of staff office for Mr Nixon, the budget for policing is dictated by the PCC, and that's an overall, and it's not individual to Kegworth. So if this was a hotbed of crime, and we were here all the time, you'd pay the same amount that
You couldn't be up for 12 months, that's a meat.
Big bag, that's a jack, okay?
Yeah. I think the last question, Stephen is, or Stephen is, is that, is a good one, but I'm not sure I could personally answer it. Does the council have a plan to ensure that the relationship between the asylum seekers and residents is a cordial one, and to ensure that crime figures are monitored? I will say straight away that I intended to ask, and this is the first airing of it, Wayne, is there any way we could have fortnightly crime reports rather than monthly ones?
In terms of crime reports, we can have a look online, live.
Are they live online, are they?
Yes, so basically, if you go onto the Forst website, and go into Valley Beach, on there, it has crime stats. Now, that is for the whole of the valley area. However, what you can do on the map, you can bring up certain parts of the area, and you can zoom in, and you can put, sort of narrow it down to the last week, last month, the last year, and it'll tell you sort of what crimes you've had.
Just to give that question some context, Ray, if I'm allowed to say.
Do you just stick to the stats for the moment? I mean, are you wanting to ask any more about ensure that crime figures are monitored first, before we go on to the bigger question? The monitoring of crime figures?
No, that's an important part of it, because the point I'm trying, the point I want to make is, I think across the village, there's different viewpoints. There's some people that see there's a threat, a fear spreading amongst people, and on the other hand, there's a lot of people that want to welcome the people into the village, and as cordial as we can. The way that we know that that's going to be happening is if we keep an eye on things and measure it. So at the parish council, you have a meeting every month where we can look to see if there's any impact on the figures, because if crime figures do go up, it's a clear indication that some of the fears may, or may not be, depending on what they are, but at least you've got the information, fact checking again, to go and have a look and act accordingly. And if the crime figures don't increase, then it's a reassuring sign for the rest of the community that nothing is going wrong, but if it is going wrong, then there's this chance to act on it in accordance with the facts.
The crime figures come to parish council every month. Either the police present them themselves if they're at the meeting, or I present them on behalf of the police, because we are sent to report every month. So those figures do go to parish council meetings, and they are in the minutes, so on our website, you can look at the figures as well yourself. So yes, they are, the parish council do monitor them from that point of view, but overall, the police would monitor the trends.
Yeah, okay, I can In terms of trends, sorry, I've interrupted, but in terms of trends, that's my job. I need to make sure that there's no peaks, and where there are peaks, regardless whether it's Kegworth or whether it's Ashby, we look at that and we do something proactively.
I think the thing, the problem we've had is that things haven't been transparent. So by making this, making everybody aware of those figures, not just the people that come to the parish meeting, but the whole of Kegworth, it's going to alleviate some of the problem where people are going by whatever somebody puts on Tinternet rather than what's actually out there.
But in terms of being transparent, it's on the internet, it's always been on there. It's available for you to go and have a look when you go home, so by all means, do that, have a look, and if you find questions, come to us.
And in the context of the question, it's not just the crime figures, you can use any metric, any kind of metric that's going to make people more aware of this situation, because the problem I think people have got is, there's no transparency. Nobody knew what was going on till it had happened. No one knows what's going on now. Different people want different things, but what everybody wants is what's best for the village. And I think if we can come up with something whereby we understand what it is that we want to achieve to make this not a problem kind of thing, is to raise the right kind of measures to understand what's going to make the village happy, what's going to keep everybody safe, and then try and discuss that, make it available to everybody, and then act on that.
I think you've put it all very, very well on that, and, you know, I don't think we can add to it. I mean, I think, you know, we're trying to be balanced, and to have a plan is quite tricky beyond, you know, looking for information, which is always the way. I mean, did I tell you again, and Donna's just given me permission to share this, but we worry about not having transparency ourselves. I hate little meetings behind closed doors, but on Wednesday, I delivered this to Serco at the hotel. I don't want to read it all out, now can I? "Basically, the clerk and I are available for a meeting at the parish office anytime tomorrow between whatever and ever. Such a meeting face to face would go some way to relieving the anxiety and sense of parrism that members of the council meant this is about us have increasingly felt because of a lack of transparency and a lack of information, etc., etc." "An aggravating factor for us has been gaining information about operations at the hotel from members of the public and other sources without having a means of verifying ourselves." Could you hear something? I mean, I do have to know somebody who has been working with people there, and I don't think you get much more first hand than that. It annoys me, I'd better learn it from somebody else. It shouldn't be, and that's what this is about. No reply, of course, this was last Wednesday. No reply from Serco. So I hope you realise that we're all on the same wavelength here.
And that's the right approach, Ray, if you can get all the stakeholders involved, all talking, then you're on top of the situation.
I mean, at a personal level, it is a bit on Facebook, but at a personal level, I have been in touch with the owner a little tiny bit, and because of something, maybe somebody in the room, I'm not going to embarrass them, said, I have actually written personally, not as chair of the parish council, to the owner again today, asking for him to make a statement and answer some of these questions, because people want answers, and they haven't got answers. So I'll move on, if I may, to Wayne's question, and I think Wayne asked it last week, and possibly we can dispose of this. Quickly, please, Wayne, if we can.
Oh, you can read it out.
I will, I will.
The only other bits about
Do you want to debate, as it is?
Is, just one thing was, I was also asking for the parish to, the district councillors, okay, to act on, for me, what I expressed in that view, yeah?
Well, let me read it, because they don't know what you're talking about. "The U Lodge Hotel has been withdrawn as a hotel facility to house asylum seekers. Some employees at the hotel have lost their jobs. It is apparent our MP has received financial support from the hotel. Can the parish council on behalf of residents write to the MP saying it looks like, sorry about the expression, dirty money, and the money should be donated to a charity or the village finances as a grant to be used for those losing their jobs?" Now they know what you're talking about.
Yeah.
And I think we said we'd do something, and Donna might want to say something at this point, about what we did, we did write, this was last week, it was raised last week?
I wrote and said it had been raised at the meeting, and so I wrote and said what the question was, I haven't had a response yet.
Not debated, but we wrote on this, and said it had been raised.
Okay, so my point was really, do the parish council actually back that view? And also, we have two, as Carol stated earlier, two councillors from different colours of the political spectrum, maybe three, I don't know. So are they as one, are they acting as one voice?
I'll let them reply in a minute, but we would have to debate this as a council, a full council meeting, and we do not normally deal with party politics at all at parish council level, whatever our views, and mine are changing a lot at the moment, but that's by the by. So do either of you district councillors want to comment on that? I don't think you should be obliged to do it all.
Yeah, I would just say that our MP is a different colour altogether now.
So just on that then, Ray, Serco, okay, what's been stated and is looking at the values, one of them is to the community, yeah? That's what they're stating as one of the core values, how to get contracts. They've got They've got 30 million to spend in the Midlands on buying people's properties and hotels and such like. And the stated aim apparently is, there's 30,000 refugees, I'm going to call them refugees or, yeah, to be housed across the Midlands. That's what they say because that's in the, on one of their policies, yeah? So we look at that and Serco, and I see him, Winston Churchill's grandson, so we're now housing people, instead of fighting them on the beaches, we're actually giving them a house as it come off the beach.
And how you're feeling, but you're going, you're straying a little bit from the question here and we're all going to have views about what you're saying and I'm pleased we're all laughing, so let's keep laughing. And you are as well, so let's keep laughing and
It was meant to be fun, laughable.
Okay, okay, but no, no, I think on the Serco question, it is a Serco question and Serco are not here to answer it. And, you know, I think you found the thing about properties, you thought it was founded and there's still different views about that. I actually saw, somebody messaged me today that said part of this buying of properties or renting properties was not true. So I don't know is the answer and without the facts, I don't want to give a view on it, you know, and I know people may think they've all got the fact, I thought I had the facts. But I say I've had a message from somebody who says that they've been involved with, that they know exactly, as I don't know whether a property owner or what, but it was a particular example and they said a bit of it was wrong. So I'm not even going to speculate.
It wasn't buying properties, I said, they were landlord events for rental.
Yes, that was what my contact said, that the buying of it was wrong.
I was speaking to someone yesterday, I was speaking to someone yesterday who'd been ex-brother-in-law, who owned a property on there, which was for that. He offered him £200,000, but it was like £6,000 over the asking price. And he, because people thought he was going to sell to Serco, he was removed from the group.
Do ask him to get in touch with me and I'd love to chat to him, but that's at a personal level.
He will do, he will do. He will do. He said, he wished he hadn't deleted the emails, he deleted them because to be fair, people were having a go at him for it, so he deleted all the emails, but he said
That's the hard evidence that we want, emails.
I know, and that's what I said to him, why did he delete the emails?
Well, that's perhaps a lesson that people will learn.
But he said he would come and talk to you.
Yeah, well, that's fine, but I mean, the lesson we need to learn from what Wayne said is always, always, always having evidence and keeping evidence. Very, very important. Very, very, very important.
There's also about the people who had lost their jobs, Ray, also having the facilities to the village.
Yeah, 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 and there's different stories about that as well, but we won't go there because we all want people to be gainful and good work. If you've been a chef in a hotel, you might react immediately if you're told to cook the same meal over and over again, three or four times a day or whatever, you know.
The initial sum, what I spoke about was £3,500, there's other
Yeah, okay, okay. I think we haven't got somebody from Serco here.